Morning. It's Tuesday, July 6, 9:30. Time for the Medina County Commissioners Meeting. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
Bill Hudson, the President, is not going to be able to join us today. And if you don't mind me editorializing a little bit, that actually prior to July 1, he would have normally been able to join us had he had Internet access. Unfortunately, in House Bill 110, which was the budget bill, there was a provision to allow for boards such as ours to have teleconferencing and videoconferencing and having members present. It was removed by the Senate, but there is a pending bill, House Bill 43, by Representative Hoops and Sebecky and General Accounting and Oversight Committee in the House, that hopefully would bring back the ability to do these videoconferencing and these telecommunications.
It's the wave of the future.
I really believe that it undermines the ability for people to participate, and certainly when you have a three-person board, to be able to have people present, and for that is all the more important, as well as larger councils as well. I will point out, in House Bill 110, there is one entity that reserved the right to be able to do teleconferencing. It's the Ohio Developmental Disabilities Council, be able, with all the provisions in there, to be able to do the videoconferencing and so forth. Our hope is that they would eventually be able to extend the General Assembly, extend it further to other public bodies. And with that, I'm done editorializing, and hopefully we'll be able to have the ability...
No, I hope it passes. It just makes sense. It's the wave of the future.
Agreed. Thank you. All right, so our first order of business, approval of minutes, June 29?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of June 29.
And I will second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes. And with us today, Andy Canrad, County Engineers' Office, and for him is Dan Becker.
Morning. Forgot my glasses, so I'm squinting, that's why.
Okay, sorry.
I have three resolutions for your consideration today. The first one is the necessity to close Chippewa Road between Lake and Bausch Road. The second is for the necessity to close Chippewa Road between Lafayette and Vandemark Road. And the third resolution is for the resurfacing of River Sticks Road in Montville Township between Smith and Fen Road.
I will make a motion to approve all three resolutions.
I'll second the motion and discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Oh, thank you. Well, part of the Fourth of July celebration. We have Amy Lyon-Gavin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning. I have 11 finance resolutions for your consideration. Then, if I may, I'll present transits. Shannon wasn't able to make it to the meeting this morning. So for finance, the first resolution is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second resolution is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third resolution is a revenue adjustment for various funds. The fourth is cash transfer for various funds. Fifth resolution is declaring Medina County property as excess property. Sixth resolution is approving the transfer of Medina County inventory between various Medina County offices. Seventh resolution is sales tax distribution to the various school districts located in Medina County. The eighth resolution is declaring it a necessity or necessary, pardon me, to proceed with the submission of a renewal of the county home levy and an additional county home levy. Ninth resolution is authorizing a contract with Liturgical Publications Incorporated. This is for publishing services on behalf of the Office for Older Adults. The tenth resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. This includes requests from Common Pleas, the Juvenile Court, the Sheriff's Office, and the Prosecutor's Office, all for various meetings and trainings within Ohio. And the eleventh resolution, which ends the finance resolutions this morning, is approving claims for the week in the amount of $558,282.05.
I will make a motion to approve the 11 resolutions.
I will second the motion. Discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to state that that county home levy was to get the process started and to get the information from the auditor's office.
Thank you. I think it needs to be clear this is a procedural requirement.
Correct.
In order to have the further of this issue, have a public hearing, as well as put an additional measure, a resolution that would put it on the ballot. It must go to the county auditor for certification. So obviously, when we present this before the public, we want to know exactly how much this is supposed to produce. And so this is purely a procedural matter, and that any changes subsequent to further discussions by the commissioners, as well as due to input of the public during our public hearing, likewise, it can be modified. But at this point, like I said, it is a procedural, just to make it clear, that this does not put it on the ballot quite yet. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
And then, if I may, just for Transit Director Shannon Rhine, the resolution he had prepared today for your consideration is authorizing Medina County Public Transit to request proposals for strategic plan development services.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second the motion and discussion. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next, Holly Muirin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in sanitary and one in maintenance, one promotion at Job and Family Services, two transfers between agencies from Job and Family Services to Office for Older Adults, three appointment changes in transit, two rate increases in sanitary, one fund change in finance, and one resignation in finance. Second resolution is amending the table of organization for the Medina County Commissioners' Department.
I will make a motion to approve the resolutions.
Second the motion. Any discussion?
I'd like to wish Erin well. It was a delight to have her in our department.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Scott Miller, County Administrator. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. I just have one resolution for today. This resolution is authorizing the transfer of .46 acres located at 881 Lafayette Road to the Metropolitan Housing Authority. This will be used for permanent supportive housing. This with the adjacent parcel will be used to build a 10-unit facility.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
I think it's a wonderful use for the property.
I would absolutely agree. I think it's important to note, too, because Bill can't be here present, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, he would certainly be willing to also publicly support this as a good use. And unfortunately, instead of being able to move with all three commissioners indicating this is a good use for public land, there's only two commissioners that are going to have their signature on this. And unfortunately, that is just, like I said, hopefully, the law can change in the future, in which, in the future, people will understand that all three commissioners are solidly behind this project and believe it is very important, and it has a public benefit. So with that, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jeremy Sinco, our County Sanitary Engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for you today. One is awarding Contract A, rejecting bids for Contracts B and C, and authorizing the sanitary engineer to rebid the 2020 Home Sewage Treatment System Replacement Project. The second is the final resolution to proceed with the proposed road improvement project along State Route 57 in Medina County. And the third is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter an agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for professional design services to replace an existing generator at the North Pump Station located in Sharon Township.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeremy. Debbie Kiley, our Job and Family Services Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Just five resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from the County General Assistance to the Public Assistance Fund. The next one is authorizing a contract with Hope Recovery Community. The next is authorizing an agreement for foster and adoption recruitment services. The next one is authorizing an agreement for our CCMEP services with Tri-County Jobs for Ohio graduates. And then the final one is an advertisement for proposals for our job development services. And that contract doesn't expire until September, but we're starting sooner than later.
I will make a motion to approve the five resolutions.
I'll second the motion and discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our department updates. Greg Brown, County Home Superintendent. Good morning.
Good morning. So, starting out with census today, we're at 42 residents. We do have one that's due in this month to make us at 43. Presently, we're at three participants for the adult daycare. Some of our collaborations for this week, the Medina Farmers Market, after Saturday, they meet, any donations that they have from any of the vendors, we pick them up and bring them to the home. We just picked up, the Holy Martyrs Church Food Pantry just made contact with us, and they started just last week Panera Bakery items, dropping them off for us. July 3, one of our events, we have the Clutters through Medina Kids Care. Come on Saturday. Great time. They even celebrated Memorial Day since they missed that celebration with us. They had two VFW veterans come and do taps and played for us. Sandy even showed up, of course. I know him. So that was an exciting time for the residents. And then yesterday, we made sure they had a really good picnic. They had ribs and corn on the cob and watermelon. They had that for lunch. Some of the events that have happened at our place, Life Care has been back, and they've been providing monthly celebrations for the residents. I think this month, it's Strawberry Shortcake. They just come, kind of do something small for them. We've started back up the monthly baking groups. And then Access the Arts. I don't know if you saw in the Juvenile Detention Center, Ron's newsletter about Rolando doing the ukulele lessons, well, Access the Arts has that same grant with us. And so this month, they'll also be starting up lessons with the residents. So that was a really good, really good piece in there. And they're also, they're hosting a concert series called Music on the Circle, and it's at Sharon Center, City Hall. And just last month, they went and saw a concert there. So it's nice to get out and see something. Just a plug there again, men's barbecue, fantastic. And then something coming up in July, July 27, the Litchfield Band is coming. And I was talking with Becky, the Activity Director. They've been coming for over 40 years, and I guess even all the way back to the Barths, the previous superintendents, three superintendents ago, were actually members of it, and 40 years now, they've been coming to the home. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Music with the arts, you said they give lessons on...
Access the Arts, yes. Then they start with the ukulele, because four versus six strings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other instruments that they have?
From there, they'll go to the guitar, but they'll start out, and they've got, that grant gave them the money to buy both.
Nobody with the drums, huh?
You know, uh-uh, but, yeah. They're making percussion instruments later on, just to go along with it.
Is that right?
And, yeah, we'll see if this turns into a whole concert at the home or not. We'll see.
Oh, that's nice. That's nice. Great program.
Yep, yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Denise Testa, Planning Services Director.
Good morning. Before I get started on my report, I do have one resolution for your consideration. It's authorizing the advertisement for bids for our CDBG-funded City of Brunswick-Jefferson-Lincoln resurfacing project.
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, to get started, from January through June, so we've received 19 major subdivisions with 634 sublots. We've also received 26 minor subdivisions with 55 sublots. So things are moving very well. We are continuing to meet with our townships regarding the CDBG projects, so, as well as the, excuse me, Lafayette Critical Infrastructure Grant as well. For our July Planning Commission meeting, which is tomorrow, we are reviewing five projects represented by five townships, so two text amendments and three subdivisions. Our chip grant application has been submitted successfully. We've met the June 23 deadline. Fair Housing Presentations, those will be highlighted in the newsletter I'm presenting at Second Baptist Church, which I'm very excited about, as well as the Office of Older Adults. Finally, regarding the Emerging Leaders and Rural Advisory Committee for NOACA, those meetings occurred last week. The primary topics were the Long Range Plan, as that was just approved on June 11. During the legislative and funding update, one of the points of interest, particularly to Medina County regarding the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill, they've received $48 million, and one of the projects includes a $3.2 million project in Montville Township for a roundabout at River Sticks and State Route 162. There's also, we've been in cooperation with Economic Development Meeting about the comprehensive economic development strategy with NOACA and providing some feedback regarding that. And then the other updates were pretty much related to Cuyahoga County as part of those two projects, so.
It's getting a lot busier at River Sticks and 162.
Oh, yeah.
I drive that on a regular basis. I've noticed that as well. So I think a roundabout is a positive initiative. Are there any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very busy, I know. All right. I don't see Forrest.
I see Forrest, but he's not here.
All right. Yeah, Forrest Thompson was on the agenda, but if he comes in, we'll let him talk, so. With that, next, we don't have any Commissioners' resolutions, so we'll move next to public comment. Just a reminder, for five minutes, anybody would like to speak? Please, please come forward. And just for the record, please state your name and address.
Kathy Jones, Sharon Township. And I just, I just have a question. Have you been able to talk to Forrest Thompson, or you, Mr. Hamblin, regarding the radioactive brine spreading, the criminal investigation of that?
I did see Forrest at a meeting, and he did say he was reviewing the information.
So you did mention to him to...
Oh, no, he mentioned to me that he was, he got the same packet we did, and he was reviewing the information.
Actually, yeah, was it part of the Farm Bureau?
Yes.
Has what's called Legislative Breakfast about two Fridays ago?
Okay.
And he brought that up as an update for a number of the people, or Colleen and I were, as well as other elected officials, talking about how he's reviewing.
Okay, great. If you could pressure him to maybe have the Attorney General investigate, I know the Attorney General's been getting a lot of calls on it, and he'd like to know that the prosecutors want investigation, too. It's important. Okay? That's...
I would suggest you contact his office.
I am going to do that, because we have an attorney contacting his office, too, but since I gave it to you and we were asking the electeds...
He did bring it up to us.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, please come forward. If you wouldn't mind for the record, your name and address?
Yes. Sandra Billick, 3414 Hamlin Road, Medina, Ohio. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to talk a little bit about our June 21 Medina Township zoning public hearing. It was a really good turnout by the Medina Township citizens. During the public comments, some mention was made by a couple people. They're theorizing that there might be some kind of an agenda to get a truck stop there at that intersection. I thought that was interesting. Board member Travies got a little upset at the chair, thought she was misinterpreting the minutes from the MCPC meeting. I guess it depends on who is reading those minutes and how they are interpreting them. Everyone I've talked to seems to get the gist of what happened at that meeting. Now, it seems that two of our county commissioners want to talk about lawsuits for Medina Township regarding our comprehensive plan and our zoning. I think there would be more lawsuits if you spot-zone that area to general business. More parcels would want it, and then they'd probably sue if they didn't get it. Precedence, I believe that term also came up at the MCPC meeting by one of the board members. I think some of our county commissioners want to tell Medina Township to not limit progress. Again, that term "progress" is up for interpretation, too, I think. Yet the county does it all the time by intentionally not extending sewer. That's a very good way to intentionally limit growth and progress. Is that a good thing? I think it is. There's lots of reasons for that. So it's okay for the county to do it, but not Medina Township. Maybe Commissioner Hamblin can come to the trustee's public hearing. I'd like to extend to you a personal invitation. I would think you would want to see in person how your constituents think and feel about the drastic requested zoning change to general business at Route 3 and 71, where there is this huge swath of land surrounding there that's zoned rural residential. Commissioner Hamblin, you also like to expound on the legalities of our comprehensive plan and our zoning. I was just wondering if you had a chance to read the eight-page letter that was submitted by the Attorney for Holy Martyrs. If not, I have a copy of it here for you if you want it. Would you like that? I'll give it to you now, otherwise you can probably request it from the Medina Township.
If you have a copy, I'll be glad to...
I do. It's actually, it's actually quite good.
Go ahead, add this public hearing, so if I have...
I'd have one, one, and...
I'd give one to...
Thank you.
The other Commissioner. It's very good. I also took the time to do some minutes of the public comments from the Medina Township Zoning Commission public hearing, and what the over 300 people who attended, your constituents, feel about this. I also have that, if you would like that, as well. Would you like that?
I'll be able to access it once they get approved. As you know, there's a difference between a formal direct minutes and those that are planned in parties.
And the auto is available now on the Medina Township website. The Medina posted a poll on Sheets, and the question was, should Medina Township grant a zoning variance at the Route 371 intersection for Sheets? 34% said yes. It would be a convenient location for many. 46.4 said no, that that should remain predominantly a rural location. And 19.6 said that they didn't give a sheets. Now, that was a countywide vote, not specific to Medina Township. And if you take the time to read the comments, it was interesting. It kind of mirrored what the people at the, you know, at our public hearing said. And then finally, maybe you're aware, or maybe not, but Mr. Gersbacher has on his Facebook page that all three county commissioners voted at the MCPC and were among the 72 votes, but he actually has it 8-2. I just find that interesting. Just some overall stats from the public hearing, over 300 people attended, 250 signed into the township sign-in sheet, 211 signed our Declaration of Citizens opposed to the rezoning of Route 3 and 71. There were over 300 letters sent to the township against the rezoning. 11 letters were for, and 36 residents spoke at the public hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Billick, want to come forward? And just your name and address for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jim Billick, 3414 Hamlin Road in beautiful Medina Township. Thank you for your time. I'm here to discuss the Sheet's attempt for zoning change and all its impacts, and apparently your support of this zoning change. I'd like to encourage the Commissioners to self-investigate this matter, not just listen blindly to Commissioner Hamblin's agenda and perspective, like everything will work out just fine with traffic and sewer and lighting, per the Realtor, per the property owner, per Sheets and the Commissioner. No need to worry about any of this. I'd urge you to listen to the audio of the zoning commission meeting, to read the words of not just one constituent, but all the public comment forum that took place. Your constituents of Medina Township, citizens unanimously oppose this change. Finally, one impact I have not heard Commissioner Hamblin comment on, unless I missed it, is crime. I'll go out on a limb here and assume you're all opposed to crime and the criminal elements. I implore you all to read the police reports for Sheets at the non-interstate site at 94 and 18. I've looked at nearly 20 years of data. You should as well. I've looked at the last year of the Pilot Travel location along the interstate in Richfield. You should as well. I've also looked at FBI data for crime in Medina Township for 2016. It's the last full year I could find. Here's some stats for you. In Medina Township that year, five violent crimes, two rape, three aggravated assault, 141 property crimes, 13 burglaries, two car thefts, 126 larcenies, a total of 292. Would you care to guess how many incidents and reports were at that Pilot Travel Center in one year? 198. 41 collisions. Hmm. Traffic will not be impacted at 3 and 71, based on that, I guess. 52 traffic violations. Again, no traffic impacts, apparently. 22 suspicious persons, 10 thefts, nine fights, four mental issues, one suicide, four domestic disputes, six drugs DUI arrests, 13 EMS requirements, and two hazmat visits for leaks or spills. And finally, how about the Sheets at 94 and 18? Again, this is a non-interstate site, unlike what 3 and 71 would be. I have that data, too. 40 per year on average, it would be a lot more, but it appears that they have reclassified their theft criteria in recent years. This does not include the additional patrol stops that take place. It does include five suicide attempts, a kidnapping, prisoner relays, suspicious persons, thefts, trespassing, consensual encounters, and numerous collisions and traffic violations. I would expect, being on the interstate, a station marked "drive-through" at 71 and 3 would yield closer to the 200 per year at Pilot. And again, this would be just the first domino. If you support the zoning change, who's going to pay for all this? Medina Township will, let alone will be paying for all the safety risks in the township. If you indeed support this, thanks sarcastically for supporting all this significant increase in crime and criminal element in Medina Township. It would be a sad commentary on your judgment if you continue down that road, and I urge you to reconsider your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, very good. Okay. Done with public comment, discussion session. Go ahead, and Scott, do you have anything for discussion? Amy? Holly? Yes, Jeremy?
Just real quick, in years past, we've always done a Veterans Breakfast for county employees, and, you know, with COVID last year, we were unable to do so. So I was just, I would like to request permission to do a breakfast this year for county employee veterans and give them permission to attend during hours.
Oh, sure.
Okay, great. Well, then we'll get working on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Discussion? John? Anything? Holly?
No, but...
I know, okay. Well, I've got nothing, so...
I will make a motion to go into executive session to consider the compensation of a public employee.
And I will second the motion. A roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes. And with that, that'll conclude today's public session. We will reconvene and adjourn afterward. I expect no, no action following that executive session. Thank you. Thank you.[1300.04]